Like to call the Village of Somerset Land Commission meeting. Order is Thursday, June twenty ninth at six thirty P M.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Dave Wallner.
Josh Rick.
Mike Kepers.
Lane Belter.
Ian Bonas.
All the public hearing order. The creation of the tax incremental districts number six with the both boundaries of the district and the proposed project plan for the district. Yeah, absolutely.
Hello, good evening. My name is Josh Low from Ellers, the village's financial advisor of the guest for many years over a lot of tax and district projects. So I'm going to present you the project plan for tax for district number six. Okay, so the real purpose behind taxing refinancing, how many people are familiar with this or work with TIP before or in the past? Here, feel free to stop me at any point if you have any other questions. That's why I'm here to answer questions. Really, the whole purpose of taxing refinancing is figuring out what is a method and a source of funds to find for infrastructure to develop a site that can meet your community's goals and vision for development, right? And so the point of tax refinancing is to capture tax revenue from development and to be able to put that into incentives or infrastructure that helps move that development, right? With the idea that none of this would be happening without the tip and that tool to begin with, okay? So for tax district number six, what you have on screen here and in front of you is the proposed district. And really, the intention of it is to build out this top section right here for new residential development by Capstone builders, okay? So the building has already had some of that like that zone, and so far they've sold all their lots and sold all the houses. So they're looking for the next phase of development here in Somerset to attract new residential growth here in the community, okay? So that's really the point around taxing financing. And so this is TIP six. We've already had a couple of successful districts. For this, we still have TIP four and TIP five that are open. TIP four is going to be closed soon to be able to create this district. And then TIP five is relatively new. We've had it since two thousand and twenty. So we have some good history with tax refinancing. It's been successful so far for the village. So this is going to be a new district that we're going to establish. The boundaries that you see right here is going to be a critical part of the plan commission's decision tonight is to affirm these boundaries. So you might be asking yourself, you know, if we're only doing development for that top section, that little sideways T, then why does the district have to be in that shape? The reason for that is because the state of Wisconsin in a mixed use district like we have here, there are two main legal findings for that. And the first is that no more than thirty five percent of the area in a district can be newly planted residential. So since almost the entirety of this sideways T, almost one hundred percent of that is newly planted residential, we had to make a bigger district to be allowed for thirty five percent, okay? The second legal finding is that since this is a mixed use district, which is the only kind of district you can have for housing and residential development, more than fifty percent of the acreage needs to be dedicated to at least two of the following, it's the residential, commercial, or industrial. So since this is only residential up here, we had to bring in more commercial and industrial on these parcels. And almost all of this is commercial and industrial, right? So that's why we have this kind of funky shape here, right? We wanted to bring in some parcels that are new, that are almost vacant, because those are easier to develop. And we also wanted to bring in some more village parcels, because we know that those won't be disturbing. So that's kind of, you know, big picture, how does taxing financing work? What is it? Does anyone have any questions there before we move on to the next slide? All right, so on this slide, what we really show is graphically kind of how tax refinancing works. So when you start a tax remit district, I should say, the day before you start a tax remit district, day zero, there. Every property produces property taxes, right? So if there's a vacant parcel, we'll just use the idea of a vacant parcel right now, just to illustrate the topic. You know, that parcel, let's say, contributes one dollar property taxes that come into the village. Well, that one property tax dollar isn't used only by the village. It gets the shares broken up between the village, the county, tech college, and school district, right? This, the village probably gets somewhere between twenty five to thirty percent, usually on average around around the state, right? The other seventy percent goes off to the government. Okay, that dollar, once the district is created, all of those entities will still get their same share of that one dollar, right? For the next twenty years, as long as the district is active. That's what's shown here in this blue category, right? That's called the baseline, right? Because it's never going to change. As time goes on, and Capstone, in this case, starts building new homes, starting over time, and as they keep building, they're going to produce more value, right? Once that new tax revenue comes in, every dollar on top of that other dollar, that new dollar is only used by the village and it's only used for projects within the tax of the district, right? So that's why TIP is so important, because it gives you the ability to capture all those dollars that would ordinarily be going into all those other institutions, and you get to use the full dollar, okay? But that's why it's so powerful. Ordinarily, you'd only from that development without the tip, you'd only get twenty five cents like that one dollar, right? So now you get to capture the full pay. As you move on, once you terminate, all that new value that's there, now it gets us be spread over all of those taxing jurisdictions. So in the case, you'll see this as we move forward, once Capstone builds out, there are one hundred and thirty five homes. And if it's north of fifty million, now that value gets spread out to all the taxing jurisdictions and then lowers the overall tax rate of the entire village, right? Because now it comes back to the general taxpayers, okay? That's why this is such a powerful tool to stimulate development, because it wouldn't be there without it. Any questions there? All right, so we can move on to the next slide. All right, so TIP six, this map here really kind of focused on on the Capstone piece. It was at that that T and that northern section, right? This is their preliminary layout of where they would build the homes and the new streets which they will construct, right? So the purpose of this district is to provide the incentives for development and to reimburse them for the site improvements and infrastructure costs that they're going to do, right? So that's all open farmland right now. So it needs to be prepared for development. They have to do all site grading, preparation for that. They're going to be putting in streets and utilities at their cost upfront, right? The new development and property taxes that they pay in after that's constructed, which then comes to the village, you know, which what I'm describing is that purple triangle from the previous page, that's what to reimburse them for the costs which they're going to take out, right? So the purpose is to find financing for those projects with the goal of promoting economic development and residential development here in the village. That's your basically go out without those spaces. And then, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the required finding for this mixed use district is that more than fifty percent of the area, the real property is suitable for mixed use, which it is at this point. Any other questions on Capstone, like small, all of them, all right? So the TIP six projected revenue forecast. So if we're starting a district now, we're really priming it for to be ready to be built on for next year, right? So we're going to, they're going to start after the development agreement and everything moves forward, the TIP is created. They're going to finalize their work to get ready for construction next year. The way that property tax revenues are received in Wisconsin, things are constructed in year one. Say that's twenty twenty four, then it gets valued into twenty twenty five, and then you start to get revenue in year three, twenty twenty six, okay? So the way that we have our forecast going right now is that they are expecting to start doing their work in phases, right? So they're opposed to doing about thirty homes in each phase. What they have initially started talking about is doing thirty homes each year for the next five years. The way that we're estimating it right now, just to be a little bit more conservative for planning purposes, is to slow down that phasing to do it once every three years, right? So obviously, this will play out over time, so we're making estimates here. But if they did thirty homes, right, at about four hundred thousand per home, that would be twelve million in value added in year two thousand and twenty four to start generating new revenue in year two thousand and twenty six. With the village's current tax rate, that's sixteen dollars and eighty nine cents, that would start generating two hundred and two thousand in revenue increment in the year two thousand and twenty six, okay? Jumping a few years ahead, after they've built in the next, their next phase in two thousand and twenty seven, by the time you get to year two thousand and twenty nine and receive that revenue, that basically doubles, right? And then goes up again in two thousand and thirty two and two thousand and thirty five, and then by the time it's fully built out in two thousand and thirty eight, they will construct it about fifty four million in value for the village, pretty substantial increase, okay? And then if you sum up the cash flows from all of those for, you know, the next twenty years, it gets to about twelve point four million in total revenue. That's a property tax dollars that will be used for those infrastructure projects that I mentioned a few years ago. Worth noting, though, that number is, of course, based on their rate of construction and then the village's tax rate. So we don't really know at this point from how fast they're going to construct. We also know that the village's tax rate will change over time. So this is based on these assumptions coming true as they are right now, both of those things are going to go and it blocks over the next twenty years, twenty years is a long time, right? But those are our current projections based on information that's done now. Any questions there? Okay, great. So since we're doing this mostly for the Capstone development, we only have a few anticipated project costs at this time. The first one that I want to describe are the development incentives for property acquisition. So this is a bucket that is coming from the cost that they had to acquire the property that they're going to build on. The village sold them property for seven hundred and forty two thousand five hundred dollars, right? That money is now sitting in the village's middle bucket. What they have proposed is to have an incentive, basically, it's like a rebate for them for thirty five hundred for each home that they construct, will give them out of that seventy four thousand, seven hundred and forty two thousand thirty five hundred dollars per home that's constructed. So multiply that by the thirty homes that are proposing in each phase. So that's how you get the one sixty five in two thousand and twenty four, twenty four, twenty seven, twenty thirty, thirty three, and then finally, we're at twenty thirty six, right? That's how those paid workers. So for each home that they construct, they're proposing getting a portion of that back from the property acquisition.
And their payment back is on their certificates of occupancy, that's right, so no payments out until they turn that in.
Exactly. So once a home is constructed, the planning department gives them that certificate saying it's official, that's how we're crossing T's and dotting I's. Yes, there you go, to get reverse, all right. So the next piece I want to talk about is the reimbursement for those site improvements and infrastructure. So of course, to be able to build a home, you can't build it on raw land, then parent site first, do all the grading, paving, get all the infrastructure, streets and utilities to the site so they can do that. Right now, they're talking about doing that all their own costs and then reimbursing that from the village. The actual mechanics of that are still being worked out, you know, how the developers are even signed. But I think the nuts and bolts that I want to leave you with here is that the village is not going to take any action or commit themselves to anything until the builder finishes what they're proposing to build. So this is not, you know, if you build it, they will come kind of scenario. Like the TIP will not be taking out any debt or doing anything risky until not only they have committed, but actually putting into the ground everything that they've done, and then you reimburse them through their costs that they've already taken out, which is the ideal way to do it. I think the structure and the mechanism of how they make those payments back is still being worked out. That would probably happen in year two thousand and twenty four, again, coinciding with them completing all the work they need to do to build homes on the sites, plus if they're waiting. Any other question on that specific piece? Those are the two main pieces that we're doing for this developer at this time. Okay, the third one is development incentives for future phases. You know, we didn't fix a budget with an even number of a million dollars in two thousand and thirty five. Just knowing that this is a twenty year district, obviously, that's a long time from now. So you want to do at least some kind of forward thinking to make sure we're getting new ideas out for potential new development in the village, or excuse me, I should say, in the district. Even though it's not slated for a specific development, we would want to have a budget for that, just in case someone comes to you some X amount of years and says, hey, I want to build something here too on another empty lot. At that time, you'd already have something in a project plan that you can point to and say, we already have a budget for that, rather than having to do an amendment to the same plan in the future. So we want to plan ahead for your little bit more, so it gives you that level of flexibility, okay? So that's what that one means. It has nothing to do with a specific developer who's already come to you. It's all respective. Any other questions there? This is a pretty most fair plan, given the fact that the developer is doing so much of the heavy lifting and you're only being asked to reimburse later. We don't have to plan for too many things, the street reimbursement and the steward, that would really be if the village was not giving it to a master developer to do that one thing. This would probably be more extensive, but since they're really taking a lion's share of the work, that means we can have a more simple, discreet plan. Right, so they'll flip to the next page is the cash flow, which is really the synthesis of all these things we've been talking about, or weighing it all out in one batch. It could make sure that at the end of the twenty years, this district is actually feasible, right? So this brings together on the left hand side the revenues, which we already talked about a few slides ago, and then shows the actual numbers year over year, the project cost which I just talked about. So the revenues, about thirteen billion, when you take into account the tax revenues that are coming in, new property taxes, and the general fund advance is about thirteen point two million, right? As you move to the middle section of the cash flow in green, those are all those expenditures. The first one is the geo bond, that would be the reimbursement for their site improvements and infrastructure. So the way it looks right now, and again, this is subject to the developer's agreement and negotiations moving forward. But the way that we're showing it here is if the village did a borrowing upfront and then paid for them all at one time, right? It's not necessarily going to be that way, but just for the planning purposes, to make it easy and digestible, we put it in that way, right? Moving on to the right, we've got the property acquisition development incentive. Again, that's the per home, the thirty five hundred dollar per home. And then the development sets for future phases. That slot in the middle for the advanced repayment is so that the village can be made whole for giving those funds over, which are going to be the source of the development incentive. So the general fund is going to benefit in the long term for this as well, okay? The reimbursement starts in two thousand and twenty four, again, when they're done constructing their housing. The development set is under a patch based on the ones constructed, but that's right. So we kind of read our cash flows left to right for each year. Starting with revenues, they subtract off the expenditures in the middle. And then we get to the section on the right for balances. You've got the annual balances, and the most important one is the column to the right of that which says cumulative. Sorry, that's a little small squeeze on one page. But the cumulative balance is really kind of, that's your fund balance or the personal finance names, the save, your savings account, right? Though that might be negative in certain years when you're starting to get things rolling. But the most important thing is that it's positive in the end, the last year, and that means the tip was able to cover all of its costs. But this one is actually doing well enough, and you're getting enough revenue compared to its costs, that your cumulative balance in your two thousand and thirty nine will actually be higher than your remaining principal outstanding. Once you get to that point, you can take your excess cash, pay down any remaining debt, and close the district early. So the fact that it's happening was six years early means this is a really healthy tip. And the balance that we have of revenues compared to expenditures is much more heavy on the revenue side than the expenditure. So I think that since they've given us reasonable projections, they seem safe to me. Relatively few expenditures. I feel really good about this tax remit district. Certainly, in a lot of other places that are more speculative, we need to be a lot more careful about the way this looks, and it's more tenuous. This actually was very helpful at this point, right? Everything we know now. Probably a good place for me to pause and get any questions, because it's really the most important part. All right, timeline. So today, June twenty ninth, the first crack at the hour. So just before this meeting, we had the joint review board get together and to hear the plan for the first time. So the joint review board, excuse me, is representatives of all those other taxing jurisdictions. We've got county, tech college, school district, and of course, the village all get together. You know, they're the ones who are basically looking at this plan and saying, we're going to be better off in the future in twenty years than we are today after we develop this parcel up there. We know what our property taxes are right now. We're comfortable freezing them for twenty years while this thing builds out, right? That's really the point here, to educate them on what the costs and benefits are, so they can take that back and then really deliberate on that. That's why the first meeting, that initial joint review board meeting is really informational only, right? So I guess the way that it's thought of is they can hear that, Josh would like that plan, okay, great. We'll take it back to headquarters, talk about it with our higher ups, really think that through. And then they get together later, that's what it says to be determined, which is now, on second, that's what we said there. That's the way that works, okay? So that's the joint review board. Those are their responsibilities. We have you guys, plan commission. This is not approved the final plan. Right now, this body needs to approve a resolution recommending a plan and the boundaries to the village board, and that meeting takes place in two weeks. Three weeks, or half weeks. Okay, then, after that, after all that is said and done, joint review board gets together to give their final approval. That's all I've got, the next slide.
Very much. The close of public hearings, public regular meeting order. Public comment on agenda, two minutes per person and fourteen minutes per topic. Anybody have public comment? Hearing none. Public comments closed. Review the minutes from the first. Everything, I think motion to approve the first meetings. Is there a second?
Well, second then motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose. There is new business discussion, possible recommendation, creation of the boundaries and project plan of tax incremental district number six.
I think the homework has been done, I don't think. There's much that we need to inject or change, my opinion.
The emotion.
Just a process. One, one question I got is you can probably answer it, Josh. What would be the incentive to close it down early when the capital's tax dollars is keep using them in the district?
Well, I mean, if you have additional projects that come up between now and then, and you certainly want to leave it open. You don't have to do it there. You certainly don't need to do it now. And part of our work is to, you know, help guide the thinking around some of these things. In fact, state law says you have to have a joint review board meeting at least once a year to go over your tax remit districts. So usually at that time, you know, we'll present the cash flows of how they're looking right now. And that's a good starting point for any new ideas of new development or new products that you might want to take on. So in each district, you can start taking on project costs up to five years before the district closes. So by the time you get to year six, you know, that's, that would be, you know, one of the last check in points you have to say, and what's for the dealing with all these dollars? If there are other ideas, you know, that's when you really want to, that's pretty much your last shot at doing it. So you don't have to close it down early, but the reason you would close it early if you want to do that, and there was nothing else left to do, is because that's when you get that full wave back, all that value comes back into the village's general fund, right? So until that point, none of the other taxing jurisdictions are seeing any benefit at all, including the village for everything else that the village has to do, right? So that's when you get that fifty four million dollars, it comes back to the total value of the community, which right now would only be locked up in the district.
Another question earlier, that is there a max amount of of district that can be open or like a population size, or how does that work or, you know?
There is. So the increment value of the districts that you have can't be more than twelve percent of the village's overall value. That's
The different TIPs that are open can't be twelve, more than twelve percent of the overall size.
So if your village was a mil, a hundred million dollars in value, you couldn't have more than twelve million in increment in your core taxing.
Valor wise, not size wise.
That's right. I mean, you could have tons of different districts, you know, hopefully they're all doing great. But the, so the reason for that is because every dollar that is trapped, I don't want to use it, were trapped, right? That's being used in tax remit districts are dollars that are not going to your general fund. So when that purple bar gets big, that's great, because all those dollars flow into your general fund or to the district itself, taking all those costs. On the other hand, that's not great, because then they're not going to your general fund, which is used to pay public safety, staff salaries, you know, plowing, all those other things that the village has, right? So that's why you don't want to leave your districts open unnecessarily, because you want that value to eventually come back. That's the whole reason of doing it, not just to create new development, but then the new development that eventually turns into a larger tax base for your entire community. So you usually want to be, get everything that's needed to be done, close it. Once you've done everything that is needed, right? I'll also say, please allow me to just keep going. My job, I like it. Most communities we work with keep it going as long as they can and find as many uses of those dollars that they have, because they know that their general fund dollars are scarce, right? So any dollar that you can get and have control of the full dollar and not just a small portion of the dollar that would normally go into the taxing jurisdictions. You want most communities squeeze it for everything they possibly can.
And right now, we could go up to forty million dollars in value, right? Is that what I read on that calculation sheet?
Sorry, you're talking about your book success.
Yeah, I think it was forty, forty million, or four million with this.
I have to take a look back. It should, it says somewhere in the project plan.
Yeah, that's fine. So what my point is, this is going to create fifty four million dollars, so that's why, another reason why you want to shut it down, because I want to use max on that. Somebody would order another project.
Close this, open this, another ten, close in the meantime, right? Because right now, it's, it one is open, to two is closed.
One, two are closed, three is closed, so we have four and five open right there.
Three is open, four is the one that's closing, go open six, right?
Got it. So Bobby's another great point. That's another good reason, which is TIP, because if some other TIP comes up in the future, you're already over your twelve percent, then you want to close on exactly what we're doing right now. So this is a great case in point of why annually you just kind of want to be checking in on all these opportunities. Where are you now? Where do you want to go and really have a thoughtful conversation on the direction of the community at large, right?
And that is what we're up against with TIP two. We could open another ten because we had too much value there, but we had debt yet, right? Because it was donated to TIP four.
It's just three, five, and six that are going to be open. Dan, is that a motion?
I will make a motion to recommend creation of the boundaries and project plan of tax incremental district number six.
There's a second. About a seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Question carries, discussion, a possible, possible approval resolution establishing the boundaries of and approving a project plan for tax incremental district number six.
Do they need to read the bottom? Resolution, recommendation, or?
What difference is this from only just?
I think that's the resolution part of it, the document.
Only motion to accept the resolution, establishing the boundaries for increment district number six.
Third second.
Out there.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. There is discussion, possible recommendation, extra tutorial, CSM review for seven forty five, one hundred and ninety.
You got it.
Michael Sorensen, Ben Rangel, and we're doing some work for Tom Lemire, and he's proposing to create two lots. One not running, existing house, which is about four acres, and the remaining is thirty plus. We're just here to, hopefully get you guys' approval on that, but it's in the tunnel of Somerset.
Anybody have any question?
Um, so all he's doing is taking, uh, his policy now is I'm a big person, he just wants to take it all, that big person, whatever. And retract it out of the business.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept, we recommend the expert area of CSM review, seven forty-five, one hundred and ninety, have again.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. There is discussion, possible recommendation, growing wings, access, assess even.
Don't you want me to jump in on this, but as you can see, the access easement is thirty-three feet existing. Ingress, egress. Over lot two, the perfect tree. On the CSO.
Are you sure your screen?
So it's just to the right of lot two, when you find your, you have your sheet there.
Right a lot to here.
What's your concern, Chuck?
No, sir, I just wanted to point out that, that, that's the access easement for lot three is through lot two.
So if you recall, we did a preliminary CSO. But these will bring to us, so they're kind of separate items. Uh, but they're necessary to have established on this.
Yeah, and, and you know, we, we all relate it with, you know, the developers' plans, you know, look up through their, their parking lot. You know, for ones properly, so that's, if you're wondering how we chose that spot, is based off of, of, of their plans. And then the next item on the agenda is, uh, the utility, which is the hashing.
And then those are showing on detail, A, on the CSO.
Will the easement go on to lot three then? They're just, in lot one and then?
It'll go back, it'll go, it'll go through lot three to lot four. Yes, yeah.
Are they going to have any? In their units?
No, it's all surface, yeah.
So once this is kind of thing we approved, the site plan. There's copies for you guys to review, if you want to ask for these sizes, they currently drop these.
Nobody will need readers.
No, go ahead, so, but yeah, so it's that sixty-six feet is centerline on their parking lot, that, that's, that's, that's the access easement, and the utilities. Is, is that L-shaped one then? Go on the hundred eighty, is that anything? And that's next on the agenda.
So this is the road easement, correct?
No, that's utility there.
The utility easement was.
That's the access. I don't have my.
Anybody want to make a motion for the E and F?
E and F?
The E and F. I recommend.
Can we do them all together?
Yeah, that's what I'm, can we do all three together?
Sure, sir.
I can make a recommendation to examples. Growing wings access easement, growing wings utility easement, and growing wings certified survey map.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. There is discussion, concept plan, and annexation, the hideaway property in Somerset. I am going to leave myself, I'm going to start in here and point, Mr. Heck here is chairperson. And the leading room, Mr. Atkins. Is this discussion, come grab you when you guys are done.
Hi, my name is Kevin Atkins. I'm with the Knight and Realty, former town board and plan commission member for fifteen years in the policy show. Here to discuss a possibility of a concept plan to annex. Camping and tubing area. We're looking at about twenty lots. Uh, we need sewer and water to do that. Uh, these are million-plus dollar homes, that's not the land transaction. What I've done is. I had a brief conversation with a gentleman named Frank to the north. And I understand that I'm not here to get involved in town politics about tubing. I'm here to present a concept plan for an annexation of this land that. Potentially might take five or ten years, I talked to Bob. And I really don't know what. Or if the what sewer and water will come. Cons to this is that. I have a buyer that wants to buy. We started this process back in last November, uh, talked to an engineer that I'm familiar with, lay out some lot plans. The goal was at that time to cease all operations of the campsite. What the seller does now, or the owner does now is his business. I represent him, but I have a client that wants to buy it and build homes. I think that. Again, because I don't want to get into the politics of this. I think it benefits our landowner to the north, or. An amazing farmer that, um, probably could have got something done, but something happened that. Didn't allow it to happen. So I'm here tonight to find out. And answer questions. If this is something that you want to see in your community, we do have other options, but I'm here to answer questions. So.
What are the other options?
Uh, we just go out to the town and do it. We're already in the town. And we're still going to build the homes.
So why would, why would you go through the process if you can just do it?
It's a great question, is because of density, now your engineer can answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know. Some conceptual work that was done, you know, essentially if it's for the town ordinances, you get about twenty lots in there and. If there was sewer and water available, um, to the site. And, you know, if you look at your rural residential, you have whatever it is, you know, three lots per acre. Minimum lot size, what, twenty? Four, four.
Well, they could get more.
They could get more lots.
They were in the village.
Yes.
Well, sure, your lot sizes are probably a third of an inch.
We would get more lots, I don't know how many more, because you start putting a million dollar home on a lot. You're not going to put them on a posted stamp. But look at, let's look at the positives of this, now you're controlling perhaps something that. You don't want in your community or around your community, like a campground and tubing. Again, I, I don't even really want to know, but you would be able to get to control it. By, um, putting a housing district in here, and it would also help Frank and the landowners to the north. Would also help out your EDC guy, who might be able to help. Bring in more businesses along that northern edge on the interstate. Now, I've done twenty tip districts, been at it for more than twenty-five years, understand the whole thing. I, I think it benefits the current landowner, we have a buyer. But I don't know that the timeline will fit, maybe a proposed sewer and water. Um, to be brought over to the property line. To the property, and so we may need just to go back to the town, do the country lots. But either way, this plan has been in the works since November, regardless of whatever you've heard or read. In the newspaper or whatever you know. But again, I will answer any and all questions if there are any, what I'm looking for is a recommendation. It, we, I do not want to go through the process, I want to hear what you have to say, but then I'd like to hear what the board has to say. Before we go and make application, because if, if it's something that you don't want, we don't want to spend the money. We don't want to spend the time. You know, this is a friendly, I'm being open and honest about our intentions. We'll tell you that it would be nice if he said yes, it'd be nice if the town or the village board said yes. But that, that's up to you guys.
So will they, did you say in your earlier statements, that there will be no tubing and camping on it, he'll sign papers?
Yes, it, it, when, when the sewer and water will come, he will not.
No, no, I didn't say sewer and water coming.
Well, we need sewer and water to come to here.
Just a simple question.
Yeah.
Will the new buyer sign immediately of the board or the other board?
Yes, yes.
Camping or two.
Yep, yep, absolutely, one hundred percent, put it in writing, sign it.
Just the key border in here, guys, I know that you have questions and all that stuff, but your time to bring up questions and talk about the topics and all that stuff. Eventually, there's all the comment area.
Give me questions, sorry.
Okay.
Um, we did.
Just to be fair, for twenty years, we have had discussion back and forth during conjunction, because we didn't know what was going to be prepared for us. So how could you have a public comment when we don't?
Well, actually, under Robert's rule of order, you should have public, you should have public comment at this point, not at the beginning. Because they don't know what I'm going to say.
Exactly.
It is in Robert's rule of order.
Just the way that we've always run it.
Would we be okay with it not running that way at this time, since it is a?
Can we make a motion till the, till the comment come in right now?
Sure, we want an open forum, that's basically fine.
I, I get the, I get that, but we closed public, or we closed public. Before this was even brought up as a thing of discussion. So I think that we'd either have to reopen public comments, or. Just, we'll, we'll throw it out.
We'll just wait till next month.
Like he just said, if it's interrupt.
I, I gotta tell you.
Yes.
You really want to field questions, because these are, these are our landowners, these are our constituents. These are the people that with you make our community.
Okay, so then can we make a roll, then reopen up discussion?
I'll make a motion that we allow the public to ask questions in general on this, keep them to the two-minute rule. And, uh.
Yeah. I hope.
Just whatever you said, you want to rule.
Can I ask? So this buyer is, is ready to buy next week, next month?
Yes.
And so they do the whole process, the land is sold.
Land.
Water and sewer are not being brought out for ten to twenty years, what's he going to do with it?
Probably have to build country lots. We're just going to have to go to the minimum density without sewer and water. But it gives him the flexibility if he decides to, if, if the village says yes, he might only do ten lots. To try to recover his initial cost. He might sit on the rest to wait until sewer and water can be brought across the river.
And he would, like John said, he would put that in writing, like on, you know, on the sale codes is on.
This guy, this, this buyer. Is not interested in running a camping and tubing operation. We'll put it in writing, we'll sign it as part of any agreement y'all come up with.
So like a.
So a deed restriction.
Anything, yep, it is a deed restriction, sir, you're correct.
Alright, so the intention is to go to very high-end homes.
The homes themselves will be a million dollars, not the land.
So. Minimum density lots, I mean.
There's only twenty of them.
Those, those buyers are going to want it.
Space, yes, and I would think our landowner to the, to the north is going, it should excite them, because. It should help eliminate a potential stigma. That they might have encountered while, while somebody backed out of a deal. If that makes sense.
It does. Is it even possible to, to run water out there? Yeah.
What would that even look possible?
What would it look like?
Yeah.
Well, if we ran sewer and water prior to plurals, if. We're taking quite a gamble, because we don't have any specificity on any type of layout for. To plant property, so there's a good chance where we put it, or utilities someday that can be moved, relocated. So, what is in the township yet?
But the, but the family, then knowing that there wouldn't be a campsite, should help them. And their realtor. Um, find a buyer to help them. Get somebody that's interested in their property, they got an exciting piece of property, it's, it's gorgeous. I mean, you got commercial on the front, you got residential on the back, you couldn't ask for anything better. He just hasn't had the opportunity yet, but he's going to get it.
The other piece to that is we need guaranteed increment, so we would need a developer's agreement with. A developer saying, I will build X amount of homes at a bottom dollar amount. So developers could come in and do a full calculation and say, it's, it's, we can pay the debt. But we need that here too.
I think that we've currently in the village have so much on our plates already, that to throw another thing, and this sounds monumental. And okay, if we're going to have a deed agreement, I would not be ready today to say, yeah, let's move on this. I'd be ready to hear more.
It's just discussion.
Yeah, it's just discussion.
We're not asking for you to bring the sewer and water.
You're just asking, do we look like in the future, we would want that to be part of the village? That's, I understood that.
Correct.
And I'm not even ready to say tonight, that I'm inkling toward annexing that into the village yet. Simply because when we added this development or this development or this development, we ended with, we went in with what we thought eyes wide open.
Yeah.
And had one thing after another, that, oh my goodness, they knew how to take advantage of us, not knowing what they do. So another one right now, when, I mean, as we just walked through the capstone development yesterday. I thought that was supposed to become a big old prairie and beautiful and get rid of the sandstorm, and it doesn't look a bit different. So we're still not managing what we currently have. Why would we want to right now move fast, and maybe we move forward on annexing it, but not fast. And if we started talking about it tonight, that feels like we're moving fast.
Right, but I don't necessarily know if, if, I would need pros and cons and to know financially if it would benefit us. Or to give it to the, I would like time to find those answers out.
Yeah.
But I don't want to say no, because I'm not like, not a hundred percent opposed to it, I'd just like some more information.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not ready to say no to it and go find, you know, whatever, but you might need that, yes or no right now. So I'm not ready to say yes, and I'd like to see all sorts of. Yes or no right now, so I'm not ready to say yes, and I'd like to see all sorts of. Possible written up deeds and documents of what we'd ask of you.
Yeah, what's the purpose of annexing it before the homes are built versus later?
Because we have a hundred acres. And we would only develop. Forty of it. And then maybe in ten or twenty years, if water was, sewer and water was available, then we would go to. You know, with.
So those would have wells and things.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other sixty, whatever, would just sit there.
Right.
Not being utilized.
That's correct.
Waiting to be annexed in eventually.
Well, we're annexed in, but I mean, we're not asking for you to bring sewer and water, we're ready to develop. Country lots to your minimum density with no cost to you guys.
And you can never two.
And never two, never two. I don't see the downside. I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna pay an attorney to write up the documents, you can make it part of your developer's agreement. If it's not signed, it doesn't get done, your legal team will look at it, we will sign an agreement, there'll be no camping, no tubing, no nothing. End of story.
But if you're talking about country lots, you're talking about leaving it in the township, so you have need.
We, we can, we can go to the township.
When you say country lots, you're talking about.
Yeah, so we're talking about going to your minimum density. Uh, we're willing to fill out the paperwork and then sit on the balance of the land to see what might happen in ten or fifteen years. We're not asking you to bring the sewer and water, but keep in mind that if we're interested in that sewer and water. Think of what it's going to do for that landowner to the north of us that's sitting on all that land. And what that does to your tax dollars. I'm not asking for any tip. None, not asking one dime from you guys.
There's a dotted line on here, the.
That's the proposed from an engineer that we hired, and you can see the name at the bottom. But that's where it might come in. It's a concept plan.
That's where the sewer and water might come in, yes.
Yep.
The sewer and water. So that's.
That's where, well. That, the dotted line is where we would run. It says right there, uh, the proposed access across the river for sewer and water.
Yeah. So that, there's a proposed ridge, you know, that's kind of an old, there, and then those dotted lines are just a concept. A trail meandering through there. But again, it's just, it's a concept at this point.
Just a concept, it, it's subject to all scrutiny of the plan commission, the town board, but Ed Gentlemen's got a question.
Yeah, so, just so I understand, so when you're saying, you were saying to Mr. Belter. On the density, you would build it to the density of the village, does that mean it would be a million-dollar house? With surrounded by ten acres, but can't get closer, I, I.
I believe, I believe the density is three acres, am I correct, Chuck?
That's on country.
No, that's.
On a country lot, right, right.
Yeah.
So the, the, our first phase is to do country lots. And then sit on the rest. And let's just say in fifteen years, things aren't moving to the benefit of the community. And my, our landowner to the north of us to bring the sewer and water, well, then we're probably just gonna do just country lots.
So I guess my question would be to the board, is that, is that even legal to do for you guys to annex a piece of property in that large state? Every house can have a well and their own sewer and everything and annex it into the village?
I don't thi, I don't think we'd be annexing at this point, at that point. And he might, they, they build.
That's how, I, I don't.
They build head lots.
That's what you're asking.
You're, you're right, and he's right.
Alright, explain what they're both right on.
Well, he's right that we don't have to be annexed, we could go ahead and go to the town of Somerset. And say, we want this many lots for country lots. And you're correct that we can sit and wait to see if we can get annexed later, if there's some type of movement.
No, that's.
I'm sorry.
You're, I, aren't you saying you wanna annex it regardless immediately?
We'd like to annex it because our best possibility of sewer and water is through our village, sir.
Right.
Yes.
But they're willing to stick it out ten years?
Well, let, let me ask you this, if your car is worth five thousand bucks, and I really want ten, and I buy it for five, I can afford to sit on it. Wait for it to get older to celebrate ten, that's what we're talking about. We're going to sell enough lots to pay for the land transaction, and we're go, and we're willing to sit on it. And.
Ten, twenty years.
Well, I, I, I can't say twenty years, I can't do that. Because maybe things, maybe Bob can't get the stuff to the end of the property, bring it over without a cost. We're not looking to add to your expenses. I, I don't know what the cost would be by annexing it in. And we develop lots to the minimum standard for septic and well.
Yeah, let me ask you something about that. What Dan is, if what Dan is saying. Cuz I'm, I'm really confused, what Dan is saying, that if the, you're looking from this board. To see if they're, they'd be interested in this in a ten-year deal or a twelve-year deal to annex it in, but not annex it in right now?
I, we, we wanna be, we wanna start the process to be annexed in. But we're going to plan on doing the country lots upfront, I'm trying right away.
How could, how could the village police department even possibly come close to handling that?
For all they.
The other thing is, is that. I don't know we have. Any residential. Regulations for three-acre lots. That's a township thing.
Well, if, okay, how about this, I need to know, cuz I don't know the answer, I'm asking a question. If I had some land, whatever it was, and I wanted to build a home. That didn't have sewer and water, what would you require me to have for a lot size?
We don't typically have houses with wells and septics on their lot.
They don't allow it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not even allowed.
So that's what I was.
There are a few exceptions in the village where, or whatever things over the years, but it's not generally.
Okay, it's not what we're moving forward with.
Okay, so, y- you know, and I, and I, you know, that's good information, that's really good information. So maybe um, I made, I made a mistake, I made an assumption. That you probably would go down to a three-acre lot. There is one question that came up, somebody's talked about police and fire. And in order to be able to bring law enforcement and city people, they'd have to drive over the town property. Right? It's a hundred and seventy, yeah, 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 sure, yeah, yeah.
Just a ways out.
But that might be a problem too, and I hadn't thought about it, you got any thoughts on that, Chuck?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's one seventy, that's, that's how you have to go.
But I don't know the legal jurisdiction of our law enforcement. To cross over onto other than town property.
It's perfectly fine, as long as it's the property they're going to is within their jurisdiction.
Oh, okay, well, you know, I'm just, it, it, it's a, it's a good question, and I'm just trying to flush out.
And the fire department covers local fire department, cousin, township, and village, so.
Okay.
I, I can't imagine there's any issue with.
Well, they're currently.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't questioning the crossing the jurisdiction, I'm.
Well, I, I am.
Trouble out there, that's a long ways for the village cops to be going all, they're having a hard time making it around the bridge right now with.
Are you sorry?
So I got a quick question, so basically, the buyer is gonna do, you're gonna go to the top, you're, you're gonna do these three-acre lots.
Yeah.
Put in so many, so many parcels.
Yeah.
Hopefully looking at the intent of sewer and water getting out there, and then with the property to the north. And so you guys are thinking or obviously looking at possibly relationship with buyer, the owner over there. Of developing that property.
No, no, we, no, we, we, Frank, we have no relationship with, he's a landowner, he's a neighbor. It's somebody that we need to be mindful about, about our plan, and how does it affect our neighbors? That's it.
So obviously, we have to get an easement from him to even push.
You would have to ask Bob how all that works, but. You, I think what would help our neighbor to the north is that there's a resolution that there's no more camping and tubing. I can't help you with um, the other place north of us, or east of us, or whatever you wanna call it, Star Prairie. But it should help that, and I think Bob knows this, should help him find somebody who wants to develop. Many, many homes. On that northern half, and we, we are not part of it. But right now, that landowner, he said to me. Given. The activities on that river, and by the way, that incident, that person was not involved at this site. Y'all ought to look at where that person came from.
Does it matter what site he was involved?
No, it doesn't.
Wanna get into politics.
I'm not. What I'm saying is that we're getting out of it, and we're not going to operate it.
I'll just go on the record and say the question was put out to this village last year, what they want to see in the future, and eighty-five. Bob can attest to this, and probably all of you can, eighty-five percent of these villagers then want tubing, they just wanted it cleaned up.
That is not.
And that's what I've been thinking the whole while, I've been here for over thirty years, I have no issue with campers and tubers, I've been loving them. So I don't have an issue with that.
And they can't adopt the tubing.
That doesn't fit into my equation.
It is a public waterway, and that would be like, the eight-million-dollar homes on Lake Minnetonka don't like jet skis. Same with the ones on Cedar Lake, they don't like jet skiing, but they can't stop the jet skiing, just that they have an eight-million-dollar home. It's gonna continue our.
Do you have any more questions for Kevin?
What would happen, um, are your buyers aware what would happen if that dam failed or?
Yeah, um, the engineer, the engineer, um, when he laid out these lots, and if you like a copy of that, I can give it, give you a copy.
I have a copy already.
Alright, already considered the dam and the high-water marks and everything else, is that correct, Chuck?
Yeah. They're above the floodplain.
Yeah.
You did top one?
No, just using light art.
They're above the floodplain? Well, maybe with a.
The building spots are.
Oh, not the campground, yeah.
No, 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 you're right.
They're probably four, five hundred feet.
Again, this is. Yeah, and this is, you know, it's a concept, you know, it's three thousand, thirty thousand view, you know, and so. We, we looked at all the available information from the D N R website as far as.
Are, are they out of the floodplain now?
Well, the, 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 the concept building sites are. He's saying of all the acreage that Hideaway has, some is down in the floodplain, but the hundred acres is up above. The intent for the concept is to keep them out of that floodplain. Yeah, that'd be a high point.
I'm sure this is gonna change after it's surveyed and been looked into.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
This is not a, this is not, you know, should be a concept.
But you can see there's, you know, there's no lots per se, but just adjacent to the river, they're, they're offset a little bit. Look out for that, you know. Up the slope, so, so to speak.
Are you approaching?
They took into consideration that new.
Depends on what happens here, I'll go back to what I was asking is. If I don't have support here. Then yes. If there's. If it's highly possible. And I'm watching everybody. Then um, we then would ask the board to look at it as a concept plan because of the cost. Hey, guys, development's expensive, we don't wanna waste your time, and I'm sorry, I've been here too long already. Um, but we just, we only wanna do a good deal, period. You know, we're, I'm open, I'm honest, we're gonna do a good deal, if it works, it works, if it don't, well, that's alright too.
My opinion is the, the cost to get sewer and water to this property at this point. Is, it'd be different if there was. Somebody wanting to.
Well, she said.
Annex and develop.
I just have one quick question, the, um, the water and sewer, say you do go there. Um, I don't get the deal with annexing it in right now, and why you need to do it so fast, why can't you do it in ten or fifteen years? But as far as the water and sewer, say you guys say no tonight, he goes to the township, they build in their three-acre homes. Now they're all sewer and water, or well. Where are those gonna be sitting in conjunction with where you want the water and sewer to come in? And then what happens if they're in before the water and sewer? Is the village gonna have to pay, or what is the cost gonna be to hook up all those homes? Into the village?
The answer is no, and no, and no, and no.
So it'll be annexed, it'll be built well.
No, 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 there's gonna be no cost to the landowner nor them. We're just gonna set aside where they'll build country lots, I'm gonna tell you why we're doing what we're doing, we're gonna sell enough to pay for the transaction. The owner then will sit on the rest to see if the village. Might bring over sewer and water, if not, then they'll go ahead and do the country lot, so let's just say, they say yes, they get annexed. And we put in these, we call them country lots. And then the sewer and water comes, well, the sewer and water will go by the people with the country lots. And we're not hooking them up.
So it's, it's actually a win-win for you, whether this board would say yes or no.
I, yeah, cuz I can get this done, I can get this done in the town.
Right.
But the, the cat, the caveat, my buyer is to sit on it for ten or fifteen years to see if the village. Has the opportunity to bring the sewer and water over.
So would your buyer be happy with this board and the village board saying yes in ten years or twelve years or?
Oh, absolutely.
Seven years.
Absolutely, ab, absolutely, if they got, if my buyer got tired of waiting after ten, twelve years. They'll just go ahead and do, i- if the, if the plan in the village board says they are, you know. They gotta be a minimum size of something, right?
Sure.
Whatever that is, then let's just say sewer and water doesn't come, doesn't make sense, right?
Right.
He'll just go ahead and build off the rest.
So Josh, can we perhaps table any discussion of the concept plan annexation? Let's just say for either six months or a one-year period.
Sure.
Um, table it forward.
We're not saying no.
They took the intention to revisit it.
Whenever he wants to come, yeah.
Yeah.
Just that's more conversation.
We need more conversations.
Case.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, in the future, it would be a win-win for us. I mean, to have. Two-and-a-half acre city lots. Beautiful homes on them, I mean, it's large taxing. And eventually, I mean, coming across, there's everything, I mean, how we're developing in the future. I mean. Normally, we would grow and spread out.
Expansions.
Always. Yeah, and it, it is a big personal property.
Were the Plurges, they had that like Woodbury concept kind of, that property would fit probably nicely with those homes too, if that.
It would look like Liberty.
But I don't like.
Still water.
That's not gonna make me like.
I, I, I know, but that, but there, but there's something that's been built that it would be something comparable. To what the, with, what Frank has envisioned.
Yeah.
Not me, Frank.
Yeah, it would go nicely, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I can't see any advantage to annexing it until. The spare reasons are there.
Yeah.
Okay, I, my big, this was in, you know, this is just kind of, this is just talkers, but I mean.
We're not there.
Yeah, we're not here, no.
Makes sense.
Not that it, okay, doesn't make sense in the future.
Alright.
Would you say that you would be interested if it was there?
I would say yes.
None of us is ready to say no, it's just nobody's willing to say yes, no, and that's all you really aim was to feel itself.
Right, and you know what, I appreciate your time, I've been here too long, I've taken up too much of your time. And, and I appreciate all the comments. And I understand, and I think that um, I would like to see this community thrive. And you take your time, did you have one question?
I was just gonna say, you know, just something Bob mentioned, that, you know, maybe a conservation sort of development in the town. Town does have a conservation.
I realize.
Some dommelmaker, yeah, get you some higher, you know, so little, slightly more dense, density.
I know.
For, and make it sewer and water ready.
It, it's, it, it was a hope and dream of my client, not the buyer.
Yeah.
To do this.
Mm-hmm.
And so I've fulfilled my obligation.
It's smart to try.
No, we're having a conversation, and I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to be respectful.
You don't get a no until you ask, so yeah.
And, 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 and I appreciate your decision, so thank you very much, have a good night.
You sent our president back in on your way out.
Is he outside?
Yes, he should be.
Alright.
So.
He's online.
Make a motion to table this for.
No, we don't know.
No, we don't even.
Yeah, I think it's cuz we let them come our way again. The next time they wanna have some questions, they come back and it's dead to us right now.
Three, two hours.
Yeah. I'm gonna make you a three hour meeting for you all on that one.
Yes.
Guys, we have to be done. We can do this. I did bring drafts. Of the planned part that we drafted so far, or I also have it in a PowerPoint. How would you guys prefer to? I mean, I can, you can, I mean, it would be. You know, print it off. Oh, or you can just walk through the document. Doesn't matter. However, you guys want. Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah. If I have extras, we'll get them to involve.
Like the way she operates.
Yeah. I don't remember, so I don't want to, uh, come on. Commission members. Yeah. Okay.
There's a post-it though, that's your statement.
Maybe I do have a post-it note on mine to walk through it. Oh, yeah. Okay, we'll just do that instead of the PowerPoint, cuz the PowerPoint says everything that's in the document, and I'm not gonna make you read through everything. I just have some highlights and stuff to kind of kick off this part of the comp plan. I know a lot of you were involved with, um. Todd Streeter and the Community Action Plan, so really like, this is the fun part of making sure that it's up. For state statute requirements, getting it into the document, incorporating all of that work from the Community Action Plan. Into the applicable state chapters, um, as well as some other, some other recommendations that we've, um, added on. To those, so, um, tonight, we're just gonna talk about the general overview, the timeline of this part of the plan. We have a draft vision that was based on the cap plan, and then we're gonna talk through the. Two community elements, the agriculture, natural resources, which is super fun, and mobility, so. On the, the next page, we just kinda talk about how the plan, once it's done, will be laid out, um. We kind of have it in these introduction pages with the, the vision, we can talk about the vision next, um, but the plan will be laid out. With these ten chapters that are shown on a page, I guess this is the third page, but it says page one. Uh, pub, which will be internal public engagement, ag natural resources, utility, community facilities, intergovernmental cooperation. Economic development, housing, mobility, land use, and then, uh, implementation, which essentially will take. All of the goals, action, goals and policies and actions, uh, into kind of a matrix. So that when the village is doing their annual budgeting, the action plan, that implementation is what you should be looking at on that annual basis. See, what have we checked up? What should we be planning for? What was, what were those long-term goals? What were those short-term? And, uh, are, is this still in line with what the village is looking for? Do we, do we need to amend it? Do we need to relook at housing, or land, land use is probably gonna be the one that's gonna be changing the most, uh. Particularly as more development occurs. So, um, that's just the general layout of the plan, the draft vision we have here, um. This, this is all in draft form, so if there's anything you notice, or you wanna talk about, discussion, we can change, um. But the, uh, the vision we have here is the Village of Somerset is a vibrant, family-friendly community that has a strong sense of pride. Somerset has a variety of recreational amenities available, ample public infrastructure and facilities to support growth. And good relationships with the school district, county, and surrounding townships. While the village will grow over time, the community will continue to celebrate its history and maintain its small town charm. You also can absorb all of this and let us know if there are changes, um, or, but if, this is kind of if there are any like. Red flags or immediate thoughts, or green flags, um, to let me know, and we can continue developing this document, uh. I think we have, uh, we'll be here for five meetings, um, so. That's kind of it, and then on the next pages, we have just the planning jurisdiction with that extraterritorial review line for the map. Um, some of your existing plans that we've reviewed, and then a snapshot overview of the census data as well as the. Really the important thing on page three with all these charts, is that household and growth projections that are done by the, uh, Wisconsin Department of Administration. They're a little outdated, um, but it's more, it's the most recent numbers that we have in our, uh. Household projection aren't as accurate as going off of the, uh, what the state provides. Obviously, you all know St. Pierre County is a super fast-growing county, um, and it, I don't, does. This feel on track, Bob, for the population, um? So it says for twenty twenty-five, thirty-four hundred, does that seem a little?
Three years?
Yeah. Yeah. It's thirty-one hundred. Okay. So I think. Right, well, I mean, I just might add a, like an anecdote about some of those discrepancies within data. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we. Put in any of like the building permit data or anything like that, at least the vacant lots. For the general, the general overview.
I don't think we focus on it too much.
Yeah. And then to round out, oh, and then we go, let's talk about that. But we have the snapshot, the existing conditions, the census data, the fun stuff, and then we have our public engagement, um, overview, which. We did the community survey, uh, early on in the process with any coordination with the cap project, so. We have kind of our general highlights of that survey, uh, really, the outcome of that was that more, uh, the. Residents felt that more money should be invested in parks, as well as economic development and job growth. And that, uh, single-family housing was the preferred type of housing that they wanted to see in the village, and then, um. More sit-down restaurants and coffee shops. That's the general summary from that community survey, not the cap, but. Um, and then on that second page, the question of respondents' top choices for how to spend more tax dollars, perks, and then, um. That kind of goes in with, I, I lumped in parks a little bit with bike and pedestrian facilities. I think that they're all interconnected and important, um. But that recreation programming there, so, uh, that seemed to be on the top of residents' minds for the, um. That community survey, and I think there were, it says here, a hundred and forty-seven responded, households responded, so.
You know, in regards to that public engagement, if I could just.
Yeah.
Um, there is a, a public engagement plan, as you may recall, that was discussed at the last village board meeting, but it didn't get into the packet. This, this aligns with that, just so you know, and, and the village board in two weeks will be looking at, passing that resolution. Just formally saying, this is our public engagement plan. It's just something that the state requires, so. Uh, just as you, as you review this tonight, or, you know, over the Fourth of July, or whatever.
Some light reading.
You want to have some comments for the village board, you know, this is that plan that they're gonna be formalizing.
I, I do have a question, kinda hung up on something, uh.
Sure.
Page three, education attainment.
Yeah.
Approximately, approximately three out of ten residents over twenty-five, thirty-three percent have at least some college education. And thirty-two percent have graduated high school.
Yeah, I also thought that was really low.
So, more than two out of three didn't graduate, that, that's not.
I'm sorry, that's statistically not even.
This was not stuff that she made up, this is coming.
But somebody.
I think it wanted to be translated.
It's gotta be a title, even from the state.
Well, it might be little kids though, too. Young, young kid.
Three out of ten residents over twenty-five.
Yeah, then, then you.
No, I don't.
And there's a problem.
Intercity Milwaukee, you're not gonna find one out of five.
So, alright, sorry.
No, I, I couldn't start by it, cuz I'll double-check that, but I also was really surprised when I read that. I was hoping we would look at.
Couldn't move on without.
I will.
Anyway, yes, moving forward.
No, 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 that's fine. I'll check in with like his work, census data too. Yeah, I agree. Yes, eight out of that, that makes sense.
Alright, let's move on, I, I apologize.
No, no, you're good.
We were all asking.
Yeah. They're less depressing. Yeah, I'm sure two, you could get statistics from the school district as well, actually, unlike the high school part, that'll be way more accurate.
Comprehensive plan, right, than we want.
Right.
Our data.
Yeah. Yes.
I can give you some regional planning data too. If it's helpful.
Sure, yeah. Awesome, I got those notes. I got that. Thank you. Um, okay, so then. Pages six and seven, we have a. Uh, overview of the cap plan, and then the, the three subcommittees and the visions that they establish through there. As well as the, I think there was, this comes out to seven main guiding principles, which, uh. You know, the create the town center park, the space, and I see there's a typo there, I got a space that's spoken around, um, which. Uh, brings focus to community interaction, develop economic and social opportunities, strengthening the community fabric of both business and residents. Create village theme, uh, and cohesive wayfinding to highlight parks, businesses, schools, churches, et cetera. Take care and beautify what we have, new town square, sidewalks, curb paint, lights, flowers, decor, signs, et cetera. Seek opportunities to blend downtown and village park to create the natural flow to the riverfront. Recapture, share, teach, and celebrate our community history, and continually find ways to do more of that. And create opportunities to personify downtown's unique vibe. Uh, so as those guiding principles from that part, um, like I said, we are moving those over into the. Eight subcategories that the state requires, um, and that kind of rolls into, uh. The page eight, the ag and natural, ag natural culture, agriculture, natural, oh my gosh, and cultural resources. Uh, we have two goals that we've drafted up, uh, based on the survey results and, um, the cap committee's work. Those two are to balance conservation, um, of an increased access to natural resource amenities. And then, I think one is to preserve the Apple River and create new places and events that contribute to, um, the identity with Somerset. So within these overall goals that we have, we have those policies and then actions, those actions are those actual specific, um. Implementation action that hope, that eventually at the end of the plan, we'll take all those together, if the actions and the policies are to. Um, the planning commission liking, and, uh, like I said, then we'll kind of do an activity where we'll rank those. And say, okay, this is a four-year project, five-year project, is this ongoing, is this, and then, like I said, it'll be in that matrix for. The village board to utilize each year, so I don't have to read through all these, unless you really want me to, but I just wanna highlight. That under goal one with, which is the balance of conservation and access, those amenities really, um. Both policies and actions focus on preservation of that vegetation through site development, um, and landscaping practices. As well as partnerships within the county and other, other organizations for restoration of those sites. And then number two, which was really the preservation of the Apple River and creating places and events to contribute to the identity. Was really about promoting place-making to engage the community, creating public areas, safeguard existing historic sites. Support community events that activate downtown and, uh, consider land purchases slash agreements to acquire access to natural resources. And it said that really tied in with the Quality of Life Committee and the vision to, um. Utilize the Riverwalk and, um, like I said, incorporating the ways of. To incorporate the legacy of the Apple River and what it really means to Somerset, but, so, that's kind of. Ag and natural, and then we have a, a snapshot, which is really just some of those existing conditions of your, uh, natural resources and. The jurisdictions for the village. You gonna have any questions on those? Said, I know it's a lot, kind of break it down, without taking up your whole night.
Moving fast, perfectly.
Okay, like I said, if you have any questions, just stop me, ask me, um, but these are, those are those high level, um. Uh, actions for the agriculture and natural resources. Now, I can move on to mobility, which is the last, the last element of the night, um. These have three goals, this was to create connected livable neighborhoods that offer multimodal transportation options for all residents. Enhance pedestrian bicycle safety and accessibility, and enhance transportation efficiency and connectivity in the village. So, um, really with number one, connecting livable neighborhoods that offer transportation. All types of transportation, really, those policies are more complete streets plan, walkable neighborhoods within existing and future neighborhoods. That get developed, uh, active transportation connections with new development and parks and connectivity with those, uh. Amenities, uh, number two, the enhanced pedestrian and bicycle safety, really, again. New development requiring sidewalks, trail connections, uh, signs, lightings, crosswalks for, um, safety, not just within new developments. But existing, um, and then participating in the county bike and penalty that they actively have going on. For connectivity within the community and your surrounding jurisdictions. Um, and then the number three is really just focusing on. Again, developing, there's a lot of things here, developing that cohesive wayfinding signage network plan, um, and points of interest. And then working with the town and the county to implement, uh, minimize access points along some of those major arterial routes. Um, so. What I have for you on the, on these. So, and then this last two pages, it's the same kind of existing condition snapshot of your bike and pedestrian network, rail transit, um. Yeah, where's this bridge? Definitely not our. Website, is it? I didn't, I didn't know. Well, we should get one. Alright, well, we can put that in the, uh. Absolutely, yes, certainly can. Absolutely, yes, um.
Looks really good.
Thank you. So, this is kind of, that, I guess, that's the layout, and I, next time, we can, um. Do it in a PowerPoint, have it up on TV or whatever, but, so, the next meetings. So we have, we have four more meetings, we're gonna come and talk, and we'll make sure we get this stuff out in enough time that you guys have. Uh, time to look it over and so on and so forth, but housing and economic development would be the next meeting, so big topics. And I think this is your regular September July meeting, right?
Yes.
So that would be August, that we would come.
Open the Republic for discussion.
Yeah, exactly, yes, that's the benefit of having a very public meeting, anybody's welcome, um. If anybody from the, the cap group wants to come, we, we're more than ready to, since we're in Somerset. We're just trying to take all of this stuff and put it in writing in a way that the state will get, so. That's, the next meeting is, um, housing and economic development, and it'll be laid out and similar like that, we'll look over some of those drafts. Roll and policy, I don't, we haven't started working on them yet, but.
And I, I'm assuming in August too, then you could just, any comments?
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, and we'll get the PDF of this one. Sent out for everybody, so that's no problem at all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
In second.
Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.